Good morning. Thank you so much for joining us. It's Tuesday, December 19th, and we're going to go ahead and get our Board of Supervisors meeting started. Can I ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please?
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Gruh Haba.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is not present. All other board members are present.
Thank you. Do we have Michelle? There you are, Michelle. So Michelle is an administrative assistant three with Pima Animal Care Center. Ms. Moore has been with PAC for 38 years since March 10th, 1986. She started as an officer and promoted within the department to her current position. She is retiring, and her last day with Pima County will be on January 3rd, 2024. And I asked her to please honor us by leading us in the pledge. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you want to say anything? You can, if you'd like.
Yeah, it's been a long time, and it's kind of bittersweet, but after 38 years, it's time.
Well, I want to thank you so much for 38 years of service to our community and keeping our community safe and healthy for all of our little critters and people that live here. Thank you so much. And then we have the land acknowledgement that will be offered by Tony French with Natural Resources. There you are, Tony. Troy French, I'm sorry, Troy French with Natural Resources, Parks and Rec. I first read about Troy in the Pima County e-scoop in an article honoring his grandfather, Native American leader William J. Franklin, Sr., who led the charge in preserving and recognizing the songs, dances, and voices of the Miwok people of Northern California. I was glad you had the opportunity to attend the celebration for your grandfather. I'm glad you were able to do that and that you could share his story with us. Thank you for being here to present the land acknowledgement today and for your 32 years of service with Pima County. Whenever you are ready, sir, thank you so much.
On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tonawatom Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive towards building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything? I covered it.
We're working here.
Thank you so, and thank you for your 32 years of service and for being here. We really appreciate you. Thank you. And now we're on to pause for pause. With two little friends.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We've brought you two of our little puppy friends. I think I mentioned last time I was here, we are seeing so many puppies come in this winter, which is really strange, actually. We don't usually see puppies come in at the rate that we've been seeing, but we have a whole lot of them. And don't worry, these two have another two littermates, so if they get adopted, there's still more for you. All dogs and puppies are currently free to adopt. We have a total of 465 dogs in the shelter today. One thing that I wanted to share as well that's really exciting is that Friends of PAC is partnering with us to do a free tag program. So for any member of the public, any adopter, any foster, we'll be giving out free ID tags customized with the pet's information and how to contact the owner. It's really important this time of year and all times of year when things like New Year's are right around the corner, holidays, busy times, that's oftentimes when we do see pets get lost. So if you need a new tag for your pet, please do come down. We'd love to help you get one. And of course, we'd also love to help you find a new little friend like these guys. Like I said, there's four in this litter, and if this litter is not for you, we have many others. So we'd love to see you at PAC. These guys don't have a name quite yet, but if you ask for the puppies in 93, we'll find them for you.
Thank you so much. These two are ready for adoption, everybody. So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa for agenda adjustments.
On the regular agenda, page three, item seven, Board of Supervisors, District Three Appointment. This item will be heard at a time certain of 11:30. On the addendum agenda, page one, item one, the executive session, this item will be heard at a time certain of 11:00 a.m. And on page two, item five, Contract with Grants Management and Innovation with Tucson Medical Center, this item will be heard at a time certain of 10:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask for a point of personal privilege to bring up Mr. Larry Starks, the Tucson Juneteenth Festival. He has some goodies for us and asked...
I do, thank you, thank you so much. I do have some goodies for everybody on the board, got swag bags, sure. I forgot how tall I was. I do have swag bags for everyone, but I do want to personally, if I can ask Mark Person, also from Pima County Health Department to come up. This way, I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the Office of Attraction and Tourism for supporting. This is our 53rd annual Juneteenth Festival that we just had this past year, a very successful festival that we had at Keno Sports Complex. Over 3,000 people came to visit our festival this year from Sarita, Eloy, Casa Grande. We have vendors from Douglas and Coolidge in California. And because of your sponsorship, we've been able to also partner with other agencies and sponsor them with Emerge, Goodwill, Voice to Men. We have a call to action for men of color, talking about intergenerational masculinity and domestic violence in our homes. So not just the festival is what we're doing, we're actually reaching out to other people. We have at the Dunbar Center, a better community. We're working with them to do things out there every month. So what you've done is not just helped the festival, but helped the community. And I do want to say thank you to everyone here for allowing us to be here today. And we have an award for the Pima County Board of Supervisors here, and we, yep, come on down. If we can get a picture, it'd be great. I don't know if anyone's here from the Office of Attraction and Tourism, but we also thank them and Mark Person from Pima County Health Department. Come on down.
Everybody knows roles.
Right.
Thank you.
Jane, very important.
Hi.
If you guys want to just come on out from behind them.
And so by request, from our administrator, if it's okay, we'll go to item number four on the addendum, the acknowledgement of Sherri Ruther, Deputy Director of the Office of Sustainability and Conservation. And I'll go ahead and... Carmine? Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Sherri. Members of the board, Ms. Leshar, Carmine DeBones, Deputy County Administrator for Public Works. I met Sherri in 2002, when she first joined Pima County, and I was a one-year-old, I wasn't one-year-old, I was a new director, I was a new director in the Development Services Department, one year in, and Sherri joined our team in the Planning Department and has just been an amazing contributor to Pima County, not just Pima County government, but the community. And you know, I say to people at these retirement events that this is one of my favorite milestones in life, because it's a culmination of everything you've done and everyone who has contributed to your journey to get to this point. So it's family, it's friends, it's your school, you know, mates and your career progression. And Sherri has been just a dedicated county employee, so working on really big and important initiatives having to do with the land in Pima County and conservation of that land. So the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, the Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan, the Conservation Land System, the Section 10 permit that we hold from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And it's just been a pleasure and absolute joy to know you, Sherri, and to work with you. And I'm so happy for you reaching this point and wish you so much in your retirement and beyond. So thank you very much for your contributions. And we have a small token for you.
Thank you. Carmine, members of the board, Jan, it has been my dream job since a freshman in college to understand where I wanted to wind up, to be able to represent wildlife and conservation in the public arena. So for your graciousness in allowing me to fulfill my dream, thank you so much. I hope that my efforts have left Pima County a better place now and into the future, and I look forward to what my colleagues and family will be doing for the next chapter. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for helping me get to this place, and I've enjoyed the journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't worry, it's okay to photo.
Not to get the blood.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You can bring the puppy.
I'll hold the puppy.
I know.
You bought it.
Like no puppy.
Okay, so we're going to start the call to the audience. We have 22 speakers, and so everyone will have two minutes. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistling, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. With that, I'll start with Jerry Gutierrez, followed by Hans... Who? Hans? I don't know, you're talking about Adelita. So, and then Robert Royce. Please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I'm sure I'm not the first one here to talk about something like this. I am here representing the residents at North Caya Loma Linda, here within the county. We are on the matrix of the Department of Transportation, 35 on the condition of our street. We're a community of 15 homes. On the south is Hardy, on the north is Caya Concordia. We have extensive damage to our street, which concerns us due to the fact that we have children, seniors. CDO High School is just down the street. They use Caya Loma Linda as a path to get to school and to come out in cars, speeding, which is not something that any neighborhood wants. This is the development from 1973. We have had no speed limit sign whatsoever. We have requested one through the county in the last month, and we hope to have a speed limit sign. In the meantime, the residents of the area have put up temporary please slow down signs. As you all know, this causes a lot of damage to cars and just to the quality of life for the people that live on our street. Supervisor Scott, we have sent, members of our community have sent emails and phone calls to you, also asking maybe if you come down to our street and just take a look at the condition of it, that would be appreciated, or someone from the Department of Transportation. We sure do enjoy living in Pima County, and we hope that this can be resolved.
Thank you. Hans, I think it's who? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the record, Supervisor Heinz is present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here to raise awareness about the chronic heroin use along the Loop Bike Path along the Santa Cruz River where it crosses Grant Road near the Quick Trip. I use the Loop to get to school about three times a week and almost always... I use the Loop to get to school about three times a week and almost always witness individuals dosing out in the open. Homeless camps at this intersection have been growing monthly, with garbage in the river and graffiti along the path compounding daily. I have empathy for our homeless population, but I'm concerned when drug use is taking place in the open with no concerns regarding enforcement. I've called 911 at least a dozen times in the hope someone might at least realize what's going on at this location. The operators are always kind, but inform that there's little the police can do. I've spoken to police officers one-on-one, and they confirm the same. I've also spoken to local businesses who inform me that they contact the police department daily with no relief. Specifically, the manager of the adjacent Quick Trip informs me that since the activity is taking place on county property, there's nothing the police can do unless the county files a complaint. With empathy for the homeless, I've followed the city's homeless protocol at least a dozen times. Since I bike the path weekly, I monitor the response, which has been minimal, requiring me to take extraordinary steps like collecting and sharing videos of how bad things have gotten. Only then will the city or county respond. With all due respect, I know that this wasn't the intention of the Board of Supervisors in the county when they established the Loop for carbon-free commuting and for families to enjoy our natural resources. It's difficult for me, because most recently, I've already had one encounter with a gang member who took my photo and flashed some gang signs at me while I was trying to document the challenges for all of you. So I no longer feel safe using the Loop. I know your resources are limited. Please pay some attention to Grant Road between the Quick Trip and Circle K, and to the Santa Cruz River between Grant and Speedway. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Royce, followed by Don Hales, Angie Anderson, and Amelia Kramer.
I'm Robert Royce. The population of planet Earth went up by a billion people from seven to eight billion in 10 years recently, and it's proceeding towards nine billion at about the same pace. A billion people in 10 years, that's 100 million people a year added to the world's population. Comes down to eight million people a month. Tomorrow morning, there will be a quarter million more people on this earth than there were this morning. Your Democratic Party dogma that says that the only way of dealing with this situation is to open the borders and move all of them into America, where they're going to be magically transformed into prosperous, free people. Forget the fact that 20% of our population is descending into marginalization and poverty. You're turning our fading decay cities into refugee camps, our public school systems into remedial English teaching institutions, where 5 million housing units short, and you're aggravating the situation every day. 72% of the Earth's population lives in authoritarian states, which to me is just the spoil system harshly, sometimes violently and ruthlessly enforced. Even after you deduct the victims of the authoritarianism, there's close to five billion victims, and your solution is to just move them all to America, and they're going to be magically transformed into prosperous people. Forget the fact that 20% of our population is descending into poverty already. I reject the Democratic dogma that they should all move to America to solve the problem, and the Republican dogma that says that we must dehumanize human beings to deal with the issue.
Thank you. Don Hales? And if I've called your name, feel free to come up here. Thank you.
Thanks, and I... My name's... Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? Yeah. Don Hales from District 5, and had some comments on some of the active agenda items. Rank choice, please vote it down. I don't know if there's a vote, but from what I've heard, it's very complicated, and we've got problems with the elections all over the place. And it seems very complicated. Vote no, please. Items 31 through 33, stop taking grants that weaponize the Health Department. The COVID pandemic was handled poorly in Pima County, in my opinion. Let's say it could have been done a lot better. We just played "Follow the Leader" on that and did what everybody else was doing. We don't want to repeat performance of that, so please turn down those grants. Clarification is needed on the type of training exercises, and also under what circumstances the Health Department would deploy rapid-response teams. Agenda item 3, that's the appointment of Pima County Representative and alternate to the Arizona Border Counties Coalition. Please appoint Supervisor Christie. Addenda item 5, please vote no on item 5. Our medical records are private, and the only people who should have access to them are the patients and the providers. Period. A main component of this grant is digitizing and consolidating our health records to make them available to the Health Department without the people's consent. And on sustainability, please push back on the Office of Sustainability and Conservation. Sustainability is often is just a way to implement unconstitutional state control under Agenda, UN Agenda 23.
Thank you. Angie Anderson, thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Angie Anderson, speaking on Agenda Item 7. Thank you, Supervisor Christie. District 2 Supervisor Matt Heinz, in a memo dated December 15, 2023, suggested that supervisors use ranked-choice voting to decide the appointment of a new District 3 supervisor. In Wisconsin, an effort to pass ranked-choice voting legislation was met with resistance from a coalition of election integrity groups. According to a story in The Federalist, these organizations wrote leaders of the state legislature to warn them that both final-five jungle primaries and disastrous ranked-choice voting, also known as instant runoff voting, preferential voting, or open primaries, are schemes. In most cases, petitions to get initiatives on the ballot are supported by out-of-state money and carried by paid petition circulators, as is happening here in Arizona. In an era when Pima County voters are demanding and deserving timely and accurate election results, now more than ever, to infuse such confusion into our tabulation processes is purely a solution in search of a problem. Do not sign any petition you have not read. In most cases, the language is deceiving. Be proactive, decline to sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia Kramer, followed by Lori Moore, Susan Kelly, and Liz... Casey? Kersey?
Good morning. The NAACP has reviewed the Superior Court's report on the progress of its work groups addressing problems in the pretrial justice system. Two years after we brought these problems to your attention, and you asked the court to address them, the court has presented some general recommendations with timelines and budget estimates, but still no specific implementation plan. We remain frustrated at the glacial pace of progress, given that pretrial detainees are literally dying in the jail. We're disappointed that the court's report included no estimate of the savings to offset costs of electronic monitoring in felony domestic violence cases. One day in jail is estimated to cost roughly $150. The average pretrial detention stay is reported to be 22 days, at a total cost of $3,300. So savings associated with releasing 350 pretrial defendants on electronic monitoring can be estimated to be approximately $1,155,000, resulting in a net cost of implementing the electronic monitoring program being only $79,680.80. Most importantly, we remain outraged that there is still no commitment by the court to stop the unconstitutional practice of initial appearances judges imposing excessive bail on people who are accused of only low-level nonviolent offenses. These people are literally dying in the jail from drug overdoses and suicides. Our report on the death of Robert Salabunas in the jail is but one tragic example among many. The court says it will continue to explore a financial assessment tool for bail decisions. We all know that addressing a pressing critical issue by sending it to a committee for study does nothing. The court needs to do something to address this horror. By ignoring it, the court has blood on its hands. Finally, we urge this Board to assert itself by voting to require that any future renewal of the IGA for initial appearance judges must include the court's written commitment to implement a financial assessment tool for bail decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Moore?
My name is Lori Moore. I'm a U.S. citizen in District 1, and I am disgusted with the way Pima County is being destroyed. When COVID hit, the four socialists on this board decided to not follow the science. They let Teresa Cullen, who followed Dr. Fauci, close this town and our schools for two years. You supervised like dictators. Mandatory masks, mandatory vaccines, mandatory shutdowns. Yet the big-box stores were kept open, because COVID knew not to go in there. Little shops and restaurants closed. How many families went belly up? Children lost two years of education and socialization. Some children were so isolated and depressed, they committed suicide. You caused untold hardship to the residents and children of Pima County, and you almost got away with it. There were two things you did not count on: Florida and North Dakota. Florida and North Dakota experienced COVID, just like everyone else, but they followed the real science, not the Fauci science. Florida and North Dakota treated COVID like the seasonal flu it was. They never closed a business or a school. They chose herd immunity over the harsh unjustified lockdown that Pima County endured. How much revenue was lost because families could not work? That money will never be restored. There are no reparations for the damage inflicted. How many parents lost wages because they had to homeschool their kids, when the schools never had to close? The financial demise and emotional grief your shutdown caused is irrefutable, undeniable, and unforgivable. Now you have the audacity to fund this invasion. Every city in the United States should be blaming Pima County for transporting these illegals to them. Residents of Pima County who were held hostage during COVID are now furious to see the illegal aliens getting the red carpet treatment. Everything is free, with no sponsors, no vetting, no tracking, no vaccines. Pima County should never be held hostage again by fake science and treasonous socialists.
Susan Kelly?
Hi, my name is Susan Kelly, and I am a resident of former Sharon Bronson's district. Before I forget, I wanted to say with all my heart, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you're celebrating. This is a good year. We've had a good year. We're going to be moving forward and doing great things next year. So I look forward to seeing you all next year. But what I'm here to talk about is ranked-choice voting. I don't think it makes any sense. There's not that many votes that we have to tabulate. We can do the math. As an engineer, we always live by the rule of keep it simple stupid, or keep it simple silly, whatever you would prefer. Ranked-choice voting, although it is being used in some states, it's pretty awful. It's very confusing, and I think if you were to actually do it appropriately as a Board, you would actually have to have the rules in front of you, and you would have to refer to them. That's silly. It's just, take a vote. I mean, I've done lots of multi-voting in my life as an engineer. Physics is a lot harder than trying to make a decision on who should be an interim Board member. Please, don't make it overly complicated. Just do it. Just do your job. Also, from a leadership perspective, transparency and authenticity is very huge to being seen as a good leader for your people and your constituents. If you do ranked-choice voting, and it ends up being anonymous, there is no transparency. So I encourage you to consider a traditional way of voting and decline the ability to do ranked-choice voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz? Kersey? Is it Casey? Is that middle? I'm sorry.
Several of us have been here throughout December anticipating the release of the Blue Ribbon Commission proposal, which we did just see the schedule for the public survey and the release in January and February. We, 17 grassroots organizations and nonprofits, are not waiting for the Blue Ribbon Commission to decide what happens with our community. We have our own 44-page report with alternatives to incarceration, evidence-based mental health, homeless services, and we can hand that in today. We also aren't concerned with what the Blue Ribbon Commission says. We're not debating what type of structure is necessary to hold more people in our community. People can, you know, come up, talk about homelessness, talk about drug use. The only evidence-based models for those issues and for these public health crises are housing and services. And we know from the recent gap analyses in Pima County, the U of A homeless need survey, that there is simply not enough housing and services. And if people want a solution, that is what needs to be funded. And you all also voted on the Prosperity Initiative, which would help to reduce generational poverty, which would help to lower, obviously, the jail population in the future. Until that happens, and those things are actually funded, this problem is just going to keep getting worse and worse, whether people like it or not. That is what the evidence-based models say. I only got involved in this because so many of my clients, over eight years in social work, were dying on the street from drug use, from homelessness, to inside the jail. Just found out again today, regardless of transition centers, release planners, another extremely mentally ill client of mine was released to the street, even though he has a public defender, he has family. We don't know where he is. So, thank you. We have a report for you.
Thank you. Yvonne Clay, followed by Sharon Green and Sandra Davenport.
Good morning. Yes, my name is Yvonne Clay, and I'm a resident of Pima County, and I have been my entire life. I'm a ninth-generation Tucsonan. I'm here to speak to you in support of Edgar Soto, District 3. And I've known him since second grade. I was his second-grade teacher, and I'm still visiting with him and his family all the time. He has been a role model and had leadership tendencies ever since second grade. And I've watched him progress. He's in his 50s, and he's accomplished a lot of things. The one thing that's really important to him, as well as to me, is the commitment to education, and he has definitely done that. He's very committed to education, not only because of his work at Pima Community College as a vice president, but he also worked in Tucson Unified School District. He was in the Marine Corps. And it's interesting to notice and realize that his friends from elementary school are still his friends today in his 50s. So I'd like for you to consider him for District 3, which is also my district, and I thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Sharon Green?
Good morning. Yesterday, I heard former U.S. Border Patrol and ICE employees speak about the border we once had between the U.S. and Mexico. As they said, an open border is no border at all. Mayorkas continues to lie and claims we have a secure border. Very recently, Breitbart News from Texas reported on the situation close to Lukeville, Arizona. About 1,000 migrants survived in near-freezing temperatures after crossing the border wall and waiting to be processed. Most border facilities are overcrowded and transport resources are limited. Many of these migrants have been spending days sleeping in the wilderness. Up to 3,000 migrants cross into this sector in some days. The Border Patrol is struggling under the strain of having insufficient resources. U.S. Border Patrol reported that approximately 17,500 migrants were apprehended in the Tucson Sector over the last week of November. 190,000 migrants illegally entered the United States through its southern border in November alone. The Tucson Sector has remained at the forefront, not something we should be proud of, with 119,000 apprehensions during October and November combined. Our governor has now requested millions to try and take care of all these illegals, and asked the federal government for money to bail out Arizona, still taxpayer money. It is past time for our local government to close the border and only allow legal immigration. You have facilitated a national security issue that has welcomed tens of thousands of trained military-aged men from Africa, China, and the Mideast, who have invaded our borders. What are you going to do when these terrorist groups start shooting, raping, and pillaging at our doorstep? What Hamas has done in Israel is predictive of America. I pray you consider better humane response to create safety from our borders.
Sandra Davenport, followed by Julia Strange, Joshua Lee, Matthew A... The clapping is on... The clapping is unnecessary, please.
Good morning, Chair Garhava and Supervisors. My name's Sandy Davenport, and I'm a member of the Tucson NAACP Criminal Justice Committee. I'm eager to hear the report from Judge Bergen about the progress of the workgroups he supervises to address problems with our pretrial justice processes regarding collecting data on who goes to jail due to inability to pay bail and what alternative conditions of release initial appearance judges should use to deflect nonviolent people from being jailed into needed medical, treatment, and housing options. The NAACP first contacted the Board in March of 2022 to express our concern about the proposed renewal of a ten-year intergovernmental agreement for initial appearance judges and problems involving the imposition of cash bail by these judges. We appreciate that the Board adjusted that agreement to reduce its duration to one year to allow time to assess the data and improve processes so that the imposition of excessive bail and overloading the jail with nonviolent offenders could be corrected. Has there been any progress on collecting this data related to bail? I'm concerned that the progress on these issues is slower than is needed for the people being jailed. Overcrowding at the jail, insufficient staff at the jail, and ongoing deaths of people in custody at the jail are all made worse by inappropriate and unconstitutional imposition of excessive bail for those who cannot pay but who do not pose a danger to the community. I'm asking today for this Board to do everything possible to rapidly address these issues the workgroups have been studying and help turn constructive recommendations into action to prevent further jailed detention due to poverty as opposed to risk to the community. Thank you for your attention to these important issues.
Thank you. Julia Strange?
Hello, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes to speak with you today. First, I would like to commend the Board for the action taken at the previous meeting around the Prosperity Initiatives and the thirteen policies in the areas of housing, health, education, transportation, workforce development, job quality, financial capability, and neighborhood investments that are all clearly addressing the social determinants of health. We appreciate the vision for our healthy Pima County and the steps being taken to that end. I would also like to extend my appreciation for the vision and leadership to support improvements to Tucson Medical Center's emergency department, to better care for patients with opioid use and misuse disorder, and all of the patients that come to us for care. Some of these patients are extremely complicated and vulnerable, and by collaborating on improvements to the emergency department, we will be able to better coordinate and address their emergent and chronic needs. TMC Health is a nonprofit local community health system focused on improving the health of the communities we serve. In addition to investing in our main campus at Granton-Craycroft, we are expanding access to care in Pima County, and will be opening a new hospital in March at Rincon and Drexel to serve southeast Tucson. And I think I said that wrong. It is at Drexel and Houghton. Rincon is not the road. And all of this is about us expanding the reach of nonprofit healthcare in our community, and we appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Lee, followed by Matthew A., Cory Stevens, and Petra M.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, esteemed leaders of the county, I'm really honored to speak in front of you today. I'm Josh Lee. I'm proud to serve as the Senior Vice President and Chief Information Officer for TMC Health. But another job I have is I'm a practicing physician within TMC Health, and it's in that spirit I'm coming to you today. We appreciate your consideration to provide American Rescue Plan funding for two important efforts of collaboration between TMC and the broader Pima County Health Department. The first, as my colleague shared, is really about capital enhancements to the emergency department, which served nearly 100,000 people in Pima County in the course of 2023, and that volume is only expected to increase. The current facility is inadequate to efficiently manage that volume, and this funding allows us to make the necessary changes to provide a comprehensive and pleasant, to the extent that emergency care can be pleasant, for a critical safety net for our community. But the second component is really a data infrastructure investment to allow Pima County Health Department itself to have access to a modern instance of electronic health record, which is really predicated on security and privacy, to put the patient in the driver's seat of where that data goes and allows the patient and provider collaboratively to amass the correct information to appropriately identify risk factors, not only for general health, but very pressing issues around mental health, social determinants of health, and the very, very important scourge of substance use disorder. So we really look forward to that collaboration to provide that comprehensive electronic health record across all of the Pima County Health Departments. The partnership between TMC Health and Pima County is unique and innovative and makes our community healthier. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Matthew A.
I am Matthew Aguilar, Lead Organizer with Mass Liberation Arizona. Mass Liberation Arizona is a Black directly impacted-led abolitionist organization that was founded in South Phoenix and engages communities and institutions statewide. We have a large base of people who have been impacted by the criminal justice system that work with us to find ways to redirect funds that are currently spent on carceral systems into solutions that strengthen rather than punish communities. Over the last few months, we have been paying close attention to the work of the Pima County Board of Supervisors and its proposal process centered around the Blue Ribbon Commission. It is our understanding that this commission proposes building a 3,100-plus-bed, $400 million jail, and that the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Blue Ribbon Commission, have received immense opposition from residents and community groups here in Pima County. Pima County Jail is known as one of the deadliest jails in the country. In the past two years alone, at least 32 people have died in the jail or immediately following release. People are dying inside Pima County Jail at an alarming rate because of the medical neglect, suicide, inadequate detox conditions, and acts of violence by corrections officers. These conditions have not been addressed by the $400 million proposal to build a new jail, and building a new facility will not absolve Pima County from its duty to solve these issues. Community members have raised concerns about the abysmal conditions and deaths occurring in Pima County Jail for years, demanding investment in evidence-based community care solutions. Unfortunately, Pima County has ignored community calls and has insisted on dumping tens of millions of dollars a year into the carceral spaces that continue to further harm communities and push people into early death. Why should Pima County receive money to build a new jail facility when it has only ever demonstrated gross incompetence managing its current jail system?
Thank you. Cory Stevens?
How do you evaluate your policies? COVID, for instance, and you are to blame. You threaten shamed and shuttered businesses, lost jobs and houses, school closures, masking, contact tracing and testing, increased mental health issues, childhood suicide, and severe declines in academic achievement. Forced COVID shots for county employees leading to severe shortages in the Sheriff's Department. The homeless encampments and drug use are ever more prolific. The three radicals on this Board who support the wide-open border policy are only making it worse. Fentanyl is pouring into Pima County. Street releases are happening, which will add to our homeless crisis. Federal taxpayer funding to house, feed, shelter, and transport illegals will exhaust -- our funds will be exhausted by March, if lucky, and you want to use general fund money to pay for non-citizens. You adopt a prosperity initiative primarily needed based on all of your failures. I would have never shut down our businesses. If Walmart could stay open, why would all of our other businesses be shut? Schools would have remained open. COVID shot and masking would have been a matter of choice, Matt. And I certainly would have and will always empower law enforcement to do their job. The health, safety, and welfare of Pima County residents should come first, above all other individuals in this county. That is your job. Pima County residents come first.
Okay. Petra M., followed by Grant Kruger, Blake Eger, and Tiara Rainey.
People are dying inside Pima County Jail due to medical abuse and violence by corrections officers. In the past two years, 32 people have died inside the county jail upon release that we know of. This is a per capita death rate nearly four times the national average, and it is an inhumane and unacceptable status quo. The Blue Ribbon Commission has refused to consider any of the factors contributing to such jail deaths, or even the reality of jail deaths in our county, and its evaluation of the need for a new jail. A bigger building run by the same sheriff, under contract with the same jail medical provider, NAF Care, and with all the same barriers to adequate staffing is only going to result in more of these jail deaths. The answer is not a new building. It is to remove our community members from one of the deadliest jails in the country and to bolster services that interrupt cycles of incarceration. Conditions inside the Pima County Jail and its impact on our community are issues of enormous public concern, and the Blue Ribbon Commission's scope, which will encompass a proposal to either do nothing or to suggest the county pump hundreds of millions of dollars into a new building, into a new facility, bears directly upon the future of our county, either to invest incarcerality or in the actual upstream approaches to mass incarceration our community is crying out for. Despite the massive import of the commission's tasks they have met mostly in private, around meeting six times publicly with little to no advertisement of their proceedings, the commission met countless times in private working groups, during which time it did essential and consequential work, producing a population projection for the jail into the year 2044, meeting with the Cochise County Administrator about establishing a jail-tax district, and we don't know what else. This entire process has proceeded outside the public eye by design.
Thank you. If you wanted to give your written comments, we will get a copy. Thank you. Grant Kruger?
Good morning, Chair Garhava, esteemed Board of Supervisors, Ms. Menriquez, Ms. Lesher, and Mr. Brown. My name is Grant Kruger. I'm a restaurateur here in both the city of Tucson and in unincorporated Pima County, and I've come before you today to speak in favor of candidate for District 3 Edgar Soto. Politics are filled with many difficult decisions. Oftentimes, you've got to make choices that even supersede your political careers because the benefits may not become readily apparent until years after the fact. This can be incredibly difficult, thinking about the long game, right? But education also parallels this particular long game. Investments in education can take years, and in some cases, decades, to rear their fruits and to show us those benefits. In fact, it's been shown that our education system, perhaps the business of education, is perhaps even the minor leagues of politics, particularly in southern Arizona. Chair Garhava, yourself came from the governing board of TUSD for over 20 years. Supervisor Scott, you were, of course, a principal at Tortolita, and those parallels play into the experience of Edgar Soto as well, too. He's got an incredible amount of experience in the city of Tucson. We've got a product of both Tucson Public Grade Schools, a graduate of Tucson High, a star athlete at the University of New Mexico. He's got advanced graduate degrees from the University of Arizona and Northern Arizona University. He sits as the Chair of the Southern -- or, excuse me, of the Sports, Tourism, and Film Authority of Southern Arizona, which is directly responsible for the Mosaic Quarter, one of the most important economic developments that we will have here in Pima County. So to summarize, Edgar has served his country, he's served the youth of the city of Tucson, and he's prepared today to serve Pima County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Blake Eger? Followed by Tiara Rainey, Diwork Ser? I don't know. Thank you, Bralik Asadas-Kelly. And if I've called you and you want to come sit up here, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Chair. Thanks for hearing me. I'm here today in support of Edgar Soto in District 3. It's really hard to follow his second-grade teacher and then Grant, so my speech is kind of out of the way, so I'm just going to talk to you from my personal experience with Edgar. I'm a local Tucsonan, grew up here, went to Floyd Wells, played baseball. Edgar did not recruit me for Pima when he was a coach there, but then I saw him from afar turn into Athletic Director, watch him become the Dean of Arts, move up to Vice President. I've had the chance and opportunity to work alongside him at the state level as well, and it's -- the way he empowers the people around him and leads is unlike anybody I've ever seen. And I think we have a great opportunity here to hear a voice of Edgar's caliber on this empowering institute that you guys call a Board, which I'm honored to speak to you in front of and in front of today. Edgar has a great opportunity also of bringing back professional baseball. He sat on the Board of Pima County Sports and Tourism Authority as well. He's also played a huge role in getting the tax incentives for the state of Arizona passed for film. The things he's been able to accomplish in the short term that I've known him is beyond impressive, and I think we would all be better off here to have Edgar as a leader in our community and have a louder voice. So thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it, and thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiara Rainey?
Hello. Hi, my name is Tiara Rainey, and I am the Executive Director of the Tucson Bail Fund, a community-based nonprofit that seeks to end the use of pretrial detention here in Pima County. And I am proudly standing with the fine folks over there, asking that you all please do not build a new jail in this community. I've been following this conversation on the possibility of building a new jail over the past year, and it's clear to me that we're often speaking past each other. We say, "No more jail deaths." And you say, "That overdose sometimes happen in custody," despite the obvious reality that drugs are likely coming in from the staff at the jail. We say, "No new jail." You say, "Let's launch a Blue Ribbon Commission to explore building a new detention facility." We say, "No new jail again." You say, "Let's make the new jail nicer by adding more services inside." We aren't asking you to reinvent the wheel. In fact, we're asking you to please stop. In fact, we're begging you to listen to us. The focus on jail conditions, your commitment to carceral humanism, also known as the idea that a cage can ever be healing or restorative, is an absolute distraction from the obvious. We need to decarcerate. We need to stop criminalizing poverty, including putting a stop to the endless ordinances that target the houseless and those struggling with substance use disorders. As a community bail fund, we see day in and day out the toll the pretrial detention is having on mis-marginalized folks in our county. But rather than having law enforcement no longer criminalize folks and setting them free, we are talking about building nicer cages. That's not the conversation. We're not asking for $400 million for a new jail. We're asking for those resources to go into housing. We're asking for those resources to be invested into a future that I think is looking very bleak for Tucson.
Thank you. So we're? I don't know. What? I'm not sounding it out, so if you signed up with D-E-W-E-K. I don't?
Can you turn the document camera before I get started, please? Before you start my time? Is it on?
I don't know. We'll see. Go ahead and put your things down, please. We can tell if the camera's on. Okay, there you go.
Over the weekend?
Please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Over the weekend, I witnessed and I documented the illegal invasion supported by the Pima County government. The main question that I have is for Jan Lesher. We just spent how much money on this property in Pima County? 1150 West Drexel Road. This building is -- it was just purchased. This property was just purchased. For what reason? You have misioneros, tour buses coming out of El Paso, Texas, bringing illegal invaders, and then they're being chartered out using Pima County public transportation to bring them to the airport, to the Tucson Airport. So who's paying for all of this? At the same time, I witnessed-- At the same time, I witnessed Google, who knows, employees or whatever, they're holding Google Flight envelopes. What is that all about? Vet security, veteran security supposedly, protecting the illegal operation that you guys are running. So who's paying for all of this? I also witnessed, I even asked the people, "Where are you coming from?" The girl said she just arrived from Guatemala, and she's headed to New York. In our buses, in our public buses, you're not checking these people for diseases? They're getting in the buses, and I witnessed them throwing their clothes, their dirty-soiled underwear, garments, and clothes over the fence. This is only asking, this is only asking, this is going to bring disease, and you know, the only thing this is going to bring is an outbreak of who knows what these people are bringing. That's what I'm here for. I'm here to document this.
Thank you. Time's expired. Gabriela Casares Kelly, followed by Keith Van Heineken, Nick Bruno, and Angos Polanco.
Distinguished Board, Skutash Anyan Yaptugy, Gabriela Casares Kelly, Bismoot Kuk Amjud. Hello, everyone. My name is Gabriela Casares Kelly. I'm from the communities of Bismoot and Kuk, which are located on the west end of Pima County District Three. I'm also the county recorder, though I'm here speaking as an individual in support of April Ignacio for Supervisor District Three, who I've known since preschool. April is a lifelong Pima County District Three resident. She grew up on the west end of the Tonotham Nation and now lives in Sales, Arizona. She has built relationships throughout Ajo, Y, Three Points, Aravaca, Sarawaka, and Tucson, and is knowledgeable about the diverse needs of District Three. She has organized after-school art programs, girls' self-defense classes, programs that address toxic masculinity, traditional game tournaments, educational forums, addressing border issues, candidate forums, an annual pride event on the Tonotham Nation, an annual holiday sock drive for Tonotham teenagers. I could go on. She's an active progressive Democrat, having served in various leadership roles, and has served under Governor Doug Ducey and Governor Hobbs on two separate study commissions addressing missing and murdered Indigenous women and people. In short, she's already extremely present in District Three and has been working for years to positively impact the community. Imagine what she could do with a title funding and the county's support. There are many wonderful qualified candidates, but she alone has the unique and deep knowledge and understanding of the Native and tribal communities as well as rural, and I urge you to vote for April Ignacio today.
Thank you. Keith Van Heineken?
Good morning, all. My name is Keith Van Heineken. I've lived in Pima County for the last quarter century. Rank voting is, in fact, rank, just for the stupid. I say force the homeless to move back in with their families, or send them to minimum security prisons until they get their minds right. As an American of some years and diverse experience, I know many idiots need to be in prison, and so do you. So where can I get a copy of this? Gahalva Poverty Plan, from Mark Evans of the Pima County Propaganda Ministry. The Democrats' open border policies is the Great Replacement Theory. It's not about white people. New York and Chicago minorities are rising up against their replacement. Sheriff Nanos could be a hero today across the planet if he just arrested those responsible locally, creating and abetting this illegal alien invasion, which is what it is. They're still trying to tell you there's only 11 or 12 million illegals here, when Joe Biden has let that many in in three years. They're being lied to by Democrats' scum, and that's how I feel about that.
Nick Bruno? Followed by Angos Polanco, Ernesto Trujillo, and our last speaker is Geneva Parks.
Good morning. My name is Nick, here on behalf of the Tucson Tenants Union, unequivocally opposing the new jail. I don't have to go through all the data, as we've been here again and again, but we know that unconditional housing with embedded services reduces everything that everybody is hoping to. Chronic homelessness, incarceration, improves quality of life. And Housing First, as Tucson proclaims to espouse, is more than giving a roof over people's heads. It gives them the space and stability necessary to receive the care and escape crises and improve the quality of life. Instead, we focus in the city on frequently targeting houseless people with aggressive policing and only increasing their criminalization and betrayal from other residents while not actually addressing the real problem. And just to say, there's nothing quite as disheartening, or dishonest, or disorienting as professing Christians who do not love others. A lot of what we hear that's pushing for these solutions that are not, that are creating more problems, are in line with some of the other U.S. policies, such as vetoing U.N. resolutions for ceasefires, vetoing lifesaving humanitarian aid, vetoing U.N. proclamations for the human rights of migrants, standing alone in the face of the world who votes for all of those human rights. And yet, we wonder why, when we should be asking, "Have we fed the hungry? Provide a drink for the thirsty? Welcome the stranger? Clothe the naked? Tend to the sick? Visited the prisoner?" Because what you do to the least of us, you do unto Jesus, and, you know, I know that there's Christmas stuff coming, so there's that.
Thank you. Angos Polanco?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Do I get closer to the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Angos Polanco, and I was just asked to talk about Edgar Soto and how important it is for him to get picked and chosen to lead. He's a leader. I know from experience, he's helped me since I met him 20 years ago with a broken system, with mental health, homelessness, and even everything you could take off to lead and take care of like real ideas and problems we're facing now. And that'll be the, oh, thank you. Thanks again. So that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Ernesto Trujillo?
Good morning, esteemed Board. I would like to express my support for Edgar Soto, who is currently for the vacant seat of District Three. I've had the privilege of knowing Mr. Soto for some time. I have seen his leadership in action, and I have been awed by his presence of mind or his fellow man. As a witness to his leadership, I think of all the leaders that I have followed in my life. Some were good, some were fair, you were great. Greatness is defined by action. It is my belief that Edgar Soto is one of those great leaders. He does so with empathy. He does so with kindness. He does so with facts and his lifelong knowledge of education and treating people right. I believe all these attributes will support all Tussans, all of Arizonans, and by and parts, anyone who comes to his community and is able to see those great things that I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Geneva Parks? It's Geneva Roseanne Ami Parks. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's me. Hi, I'm Geneva Parks. I'm born and raised in Tucson. I just graduated from the law school here in the Indigenous Peoples' Law and Policy Program. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I wanted to express my support for April Ignacio for District Three. I'll keep it short. You already heard a list of her accomplishments from Gabby. That was not even everything that April has done, but I just think that District Three and the entire county could benefit from April's expertise and leadership. She works tirelessly and passionately for the causes that she believes in, and I've seen her work with Indivisible Tuhano. I have a really good friend who organizes in that group, and I'm just like constantly amazed by the work that they do. I don't know where she finds the time or the energy. As a mother of five as well, I'm constantly in awe of the work that she does, and I wanted to express my unwavering support for her here today. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more speakers, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the audience and ask my colleagues if they wish to address a criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Chair Gahalva?
Yes, Supervisor Scott?
I don't see the gentleman who was here at the beginning of call to the public who spoke to us about situation dealing with Kaie Loma Linda, but if I could ask Ms. Lesher to direct staff to follow up with him so that we can get some more information about the use of the road by staff and students at Canyon Del Oro High School, and also the fact that there is currently no speed limit sign on the road.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask staff to address the concerns of Haas Huth, who was talking about the loop in that area near the QT and Circle K on Grant. And then I was just going to ask Ms. Casey if you wanted to email your documents to COB, then the underscore mail@pima.gov. We can get all of the documents in one. That would be really helpful. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on. On the agenda, we have executive session, but we won't be doing that until 11:00. Our next time certain is at 10:30, and so item number six, Consent Calendar. Approval of the consent. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes 4-0. Item number seven will be heard at a time certain of 11:30. Item number eight is request for redemption of waiver exemption. This is pursuant to ARS 42-11153B. Pima County assessors determine that the applicants for redemption of waivers of tax exemptions for the tax year 2023 qualify for exemption under the applicable statutes, and request the Board of Supervisors redeem the waivers. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes unanimously. Item number nine is final plat with the assurances and the enclave at the canyon. I'll move the item.
Second.
Oh, this is in District One?
It's fine.
Okay. I have a motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes unanimously. Item number 10, finalizing the precinct adoption of a new Board Supervisor, Pima County, or Pima Community College and Justice of the Peace District maps. Administrator Lesher, did you want to address this item?
Chair Gahalva, I'm sorry, Elections Director Constance Hargrove is here if there are questions from the Board.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion of questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Hargrove, for being here. Item 11, Monthly Financial Update. Administrator Lesher?
Chair Gahalva, I would like to turn it over to, you've received the written report. The Director of Finance, Ellen Moulton, is here to review that and to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Gahalva, Supervisors, you received the monthly financial report, and I would like to provide some highlights and then answer any questions that you might have. Currently, the revenue forecast for the general fund is stable. We are currently projecting to receive approximately $1.1 million more in revenue than budgeted. Property tax revenue is forecasted to be slightly under budget at $1.6 million, garnering $428 million in tax revenues for the general fund. The reason for this decrease in projected tax revenues is a settlement with Southwest Gas lawsuit for tax years 2022 and 2023. State, federal revenues, and other non-departmental revenues are forecasted to be slightly over budget. The increase in that area is due to interest income. The general fund departmental revenues are also forecasted to be on target with a budget of $38 million. Those general fund departmental revenues are revenues generated through departmental activities, fees, permits, and the like. With regard to the general fund expenditures, the projections for October are projected to be over budget by $1.9 million at June 30. There are three departments that have indicated through their forecasts that they will be significantly over budget if nothing changes. They are Facilities Management, the Sheriff's Department, and Public Defender Services. With regard to Facilities Management, they are projecting to be $535,000 over budget at June. Most of that is due to increased electricity costs. A county-wide analysis of electricity cost is underway. With the Period Five forecast that you will be receiving next month, Finance will be providing a recommendation on how to distribute a portion of the inflation contingency. The Sheriff's Department, as a Period Four, is also projected to be over budget, $5.5 million. This is a significant decrease from their first projection in August. Most of this overage is attributable to personnel costs, including $3.9 in overtime. Supplies are also projected to be over budget by roughly $1.5 million. The Sheriff and the Finance Risk Management staff continue to work together to monitor the distribution of the $5 million inflation contingency that is in the '24 budget. The Public Defender Services is also projecting to be over budget, $1.3 million. This is a reversal of the September projection, which indicated the department was going to be under budget. The department has identified two areas that are contributing to this swing, a more refined staffing model. The department has identified that they expect to fill six vacant positions in the month of December and an additional three positions in January. This has changed their vacancy savings. In addition, they are increasing the amount of contract attorneys that they believe they need due to persistent heightened caseloads. In total, the Period Four forecast for the general fund has Pima County ending in a slightly negative position. For non-general fund departments, there are two departments that are forecasting to be over budget in expenses at the end of the year, and one department experiencing a revenue shortfall. Human Resources Health Benefit Trust is forecasted to be over budget, $2.6 million. This is due to continued increased costs in medical and pharmaceutical claims. Earlier this month, the Board identified or approved increases in the medical premiums which will address that shortfall. The ITD Internal Service Fund for Enterprise Software is also projected to be over budget by $1.8 million. A portion of that is related to the Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement increases, increases for the library, and increases related to the new Enterprise Resource Planning System. We are still reviewing where all of those charges are. The budget, the overage on this budget came down a little bit in Period Four, and we expect to have a verifiable number in December. The department that is experiencing a revenue shortfall is Transportation. The Arizona Department of Transportation has provided an updated projections for the highway user fees. At this point, Transportation is anticipated to receive approximately $2.3 million less than was budgeted, and they are in the process of identifying how they are going to deal with that revenue shortfall. All the departments-- All the departments that are projecting to be over budget or who have significant revenue shortfalls will be providing budget remediation plans, which will come to the board with the Period 5 forecast in January. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. Ms. Moulton wanted to first publicly thank you for the memorandum that the board received regarding the work you've been doing with the Sheriff's Department, that you and your team has been doing with the Sheriff's Department, and also the memorandum we got on the different forecasts that various departments used between the budgetary periods. I just wanted to ask, with regard to the remediation plans.
Supervisor Scott, excuse me.
Yes.
So, we don't have a quorum, so we need to stop.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We will resume shortly. That's okay.
I apologize. I didn't think that we would have a quorum issue. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gahalva. I was wondering, what will be the components of the budget remediation plans that will be shared with the board?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisors, we've designed a form that will help the departments provide what we believe should be sufficient information. We identify, is the department over budget due to expenditure increases, or is it a problem because of a lack of revenue? Each one of those areas has, we are requesting the department to identify how they plan to come back into line with specificity, as in reducing this line item on the budget, eliminating these positions. And we have also asked them to provide a timeline when they believe they will be back in compliance with their budget.
Thank you. And if I could just ask a follow-up question. Is it in January that we're going to get something from administration with regard to the inflation contingency funds?
Yes, we are finishing that analysis right now and will come as part of the financial update.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gahalva.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yeah. One of the issues that's very concerning to me, due to the fact that there have been promises made and pledges of promises to be kept, and it's troubling when I look at the non-general fund revenues under Transportation, which says, "Due to a reduced forecast by the Arizona Department of Transportation for its Highway User Revenue Fund collections, the department is projecting a $2.3 million revenue shortfall." Transportation is currently assessing the implications of this on their service delivery. First of all, we have Pago that is supposed to be funding our 10-year road plan of repair. I don't quite understand that $2.3 million shortfall should have that great of an impact on the process of fixing our roads, which we promised to do within 10 years. $2.3 million really doesn't even come close to representing much of anything as far as the overall allocated money to repair our roads. And I would like some sort of an explanation or a determination about the term assessing the implications of this on their, quote, "service delivery." What does "service delivery" mean in this manner?
Chair Gahalva.
Administrator Christie.
Supervisor Christie, and then I'll let Mr. DeBonis take a little bit more. Obviously, we remain, and the Transportation Department remains committed to the plan that is brought to the board. We can't look at a department that has a loss of revenue from the state that's over $2 million and not have a department begin to look at what it needs to do to make up for that $2 million. That's why we haven't provided any information to the board, because we don't believe it will have a direct impact necessarily on that plan. There are other funding models and other funding opportunities, such as Pago. But we absolutely need to have a director look at a department that's got a deficit and help us understand what we're going to do to make up for that. To speak to the specifics of the plan, Mr. DeBonis, if you wanted to add something.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I really don't have anything else to add at this point. As Ms. Lesher indicated, we'll look at the entirety of the services delivered by the department. Pavement is but one component of that, so we want to take a comprehensive look and then come back and indicate to the board, these are the ways that we're going to deal with that revenue shortfall.
Madam Chair, Mr. DeBonis and County Administrator Lesher, remind me and all of us again the amount of money that the plan was planning to be able to have in accumulation?
So, the, Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, the original 10-year plan was about $560 million was what was identified. And obviously, we've experienced, as everybody has, inflationary increases on that, but $560 million roughly was the original cost of the 10-year plan.
And it's being determined that $2.3 million shortfall from other sources other than Pago are going to affect the, quote, "service delivery"?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Christie, again, we have, the service delivery is within a Department of Transportation, includes many elements other than simply the road repair and maintenance. That's why we've said we are coming back and let the board know what's included in that. This does not by any means suggest that the $2 million will come out of the road maintenance program. It is out of all of the operations of the Transportation Department, and that's what we'll be returning to the board with.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, when do you project this information to be provided back to the board?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Christie, we report to the board on the financial element at the second board meeting of each month. I would ask that we come back on that schedule with, I believe it's the 23rd of January, and we'll get materials to the board prior to that board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lesher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBonis.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moulton. So, we're on to addendum, item number five, the Grants Management and Innovation, TMC to provide for TMC emergency room enhancements using the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And the contract amount is $6.3 million over a five-year term. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Is this item, is this to implement what the Board of Supervisors already passed, or is this additional funding?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Christie, it is to implement what you already passed. At a previous board meeting, the board delineated the program for expenditures related to the ARPA funds. This $6.3 million was included in that plan. This is coming back to you simply with the specific contractual agreement for the utilization of these funds. It is not additional funds. It is funds you have previously approved.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I'm looking at the minutes from our meeting where this was initially approved. There was a motion that was second and approved by the board to separate the items from, A, the expansion and improvement to the emergency room of TMC, and B, the accumulation of patient information and dissemination to other authorities. It was agreed that we would separate those two items for separate votes. My concern, again, is the same that I had earlier, and in addition to the fact that there's other ramifications involved of sharing personal, private information with other entities other than a primary physician, caregiver, and the patient. I'm concerned about the HIPAA violations that might exist with the accumulation of patient history. And I'm wondering if there is an opportunity here where we can replicate the separation of the items for vote.
I'm happy to do that, but both items passed. So, I think that's why it's combined into one.
But my issue is, I want to support the expansion of TMC, but I don't support the accumulation of private information.
This document, is it listed where the costs are separated, just so we're clear on what's being voted on? I didn't see that. Administrator Lesher?
Thank you. Chair Gahalva, Dr. Garcia, if you'd like to address that, thank you. And I know we also have individuals from TMC who might be able to explain.
It's in the boss air.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be in the boss air, I believe. Dr. G can elaborate.
Dr. Garcia.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Administrator Lesher. Indeed, the scope of work of this particular contract is included in the agreement that you have before you. I will direct you to the exact page. But a couple of things, this was put into a single contract because it is with a single entity that we are contracting to do these things. Number two, there is no sharing of personal information. What this is, is a HIPAA compliant, this provides a HIPAA compliant way of being able to exchange information when patients have authorized that exchange of information on either end. The actual contract is broken up, has four components. There is a design component, there is a, I'm sorry, a design and planning component, there is a demolition component, there is a, and I'm trying to find it in the actual contract.
Me too.
There is a laboratory equipment component, there is a, try and see how it was worded. There is the electronic health record, which is the contracted piece that you are referencing. Oh, here it is. And a digital connectivity infrastructure. So, digital connectivity has to do with the way that information is shared within the health system. Again, TMC is a highly reputable HIPAA compliant entity that has not had an issue with this. And this is part of the overall infrastructure of an emergency room.
Madam Chair, Dr. Garcia, in the background, you cited that there were four or five different areas that this was being allocated for. I only see two. One is to allow TMC to expand the emergency apartment to increase bed capacity, improve efficiency, and increase staff and provider satisfaction. And then the other one states, "Funds will be used to allow Pima County Health Department access to an electronic medical record instance for inclusion in the community health hub, bolstering the ability of medical providers in the emergency department to have access to necessary and complete health information for treatment." This is a difficult situation because of what I stated earlier, but I see there's no willingness to divide the.
I wanted to get the numbers, so that's all I was asking. I was looking for it. Dr. Garcia, did you want to?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Christie, so, and perhaps Dr. Josh Lee can describe what the community hub is. It is a TMC-operated system for healthcare partners to connect with TMC and to connect with each other. This is part of what is covered in this contract. This also allows the Health Department to replace its outdated electronic health record, which will be up for replacement in this next year or two years. So, if it's appropriate, I would ask that Dr. Josh Lee address that specific issue.
Please. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. So, in fact, with the provision of this sort of next-generation electronic health record implementation on behalf of the county, it actually provides the patient with much more control about where their records are going. So, to be clear, there are federal statutes that prevent any given health system from not making data available. It's actually a requirement that we make data available that with the patient's consent, this can be part of sharing. This is a part of a framework. In fact, it's, the electronic health record we're using is now compliant with the standard known as TEFCA effective this week. And so, it really puts the patient in the control point when they sign up at a notice of privacy practices, when they initially register, to identify the conditions under which they will share that information. Just to give a quick primer to the Board of Supervisors, the transmission of health information for the purpose of continuity of care is actually permissible transfer information. So, when a patient chooses to present for care at any emergency department, they are effectively agreeing to have that emergency department have access to those records that are available. What is not happening is some large aggregation of data at the countywide level that the patient does not know about, nor have they agreed to. So, I want to be super clear that the patient initially provides consent for their data to be made available in a sharing moment. They have to make that initial consent. And the second is that the only moment at which data is sort of accessed across this line is when a patient has chosen to present for continuity of care. I hope that helps explain the ways in which the record is actually much more able, on a granular level, to control that transmission. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Doctor, I will take you for your word on this. Also, my wife was a surgical nurse there for 12 years. I was born there. My children were born there, so I have a connection to TMC. But if you're telling me what you just conveyed, that there should be no issues regarding the dissemination of private, personal patient history to outside sources, I will take that at face value and take your word for it.
Well, I appreciate that trust and confidence, and I would say, you know, attest right here, I mean, I've found the whole Board of Supervisors, this is what we do every day.
You are on records.
We're all on the record. This is what we do every day, is protect the sanctity of the electronic health record. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, I did all of the math for nothing, and we're going to move the whole $6.3? I know, I subtracted and, I wasn't sure which one you wanted, whether it's digital connectivity or the Health Department medical record. So, if, I mean, what was moved was the entire amount, $6.3. Okay? So, that's what we're going to vote on? Anything else? All right. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously, 3-0. Yes. Well, he's not here, so that's, he's abstaining because he works at TMC. Okay. So, our next time certain item is going to be executive session. Yes. Well, he's not here to vote, so, thank you. We'll go back on the agenda. So, the financial update had no action. Item 11. So, now we're at item 12, Single Family Mortgage Revenue Bond Fund. This is a Resolution Number 202365 for the Board of Supervisors to approve IDA for the county and single mortgage, single family mortgage revenue bond of 2024. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion of second by Supervisor Scott. Questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Do we know what percentage of the bonds are dedicated to unincorporated Pima County versus City of Tucson?
Chair Gahalva and Supervisor Christie, Mr. Slaney is here, legal counsel for the IDA.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you. Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, no, there is no division. We make the total amount available with each tranche or sub-series of the bonds. So, until those loans are fully originated, and we are still fully originating the first series that were done because of the amount of time that it takes to go through the system. So, we won't know that information on the division between what's in the city versus what's in the unincorporated Pima County, probably for, on the first issue that we did in 2023A in June, probably for another month or two, because we are still fully originating those loans. There is no, but there is no division. We, lenders are told that they can make a loan anywhere within Pima County.
Madam Chair, do we know what response and feedback to this issuance have we received from the Regional Affordable Housing Commission?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I went to the Regional Housing Commission, presented this, the Single Family Mortgage Revenue Bond Program that Pima IDA, as well as the Tucson IDA, had undertaken. They asked a few questions. They asked a few questions and nothing since then.
Would you, would you describe that as approval?
Oh, they were, I think they were very interested in what was going on. They expressed interest in how they could participate and then asked questions about the marketing.
Yeah.
So yes.
But I don't, I don't believe that they vote on this item.
They do not.
We, the board votes, you were just presenting information. Okay, I just wanted to make that.
And, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
In the contract or the, the letter to the board, the last sentence says, please note that the form of resolution includes an emergency clause based upon the advice of the Pima County's, Pima County Attorney's Office. Why and what do we have an emergency clause for?
Madam Chair, members of the board, after discussion with the Pima County Attorney's Office, the use of an emergency clause is used when the resolution is to be immediately effective. It cuts off what is otherwise available under state law for a 30-day referendum or initiative period, so that the bonds can be immediately sold or to action taken thereafter. I have represented the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Pima for a number of years. On the advice of Pima County Attorney's Office, we always used to use the emergency clause. Then there was a decision that it was not needed, and after the board's action on the 2023B, the decision was made to add it back. It does require a 75% vote of the members sitting at the time in order to be effective. If it's less than that, we have to wait the 30 days. It becomes effective after the 30 days unless there's a referendum or initiative taken. But, and I apologize, I'm, in this case, I represent the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Pima. We defer to the Pima County Attorney's Office on matters and what they advise you on. So we are taking their advice and adding the emergency clause here.
And Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
In your many, many years of dealing with this, have we ever invoked the emergency clause?
Madam Chair, member Supervisor Christie, the answer is yes. The majority of the bond issues up through probably 2010 all had an emergency clause on it. Different, Pima County attorneys have different attitudes towards it and have, of course, the law changes depending on, in this case, a court ruling.
So it has been invoked?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so in this case, the last time we approved this had passed 3-2, so you had to wait the 30 days, which, did that impact the rate?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the answer is if we would have priced on the original schedule, which assumed that it would have been immediately effective, the loan rate would have been about 6.25. Though we, by waiting, as people know, interest rates have gone up or were going up in that time period, we secured it for the 2023B program, a 6.89 rate. So waiting costs that. Interest rates are now coming back down, so I can't tell you. Part of the reason for the size of this offering is that we would, again, have the flexibility to price it according to when the market said this is a good rate that we can use.
Okay. So in this case, you said 75%, so three of us would have to vote in favor in order for you to be able to, to do what you need to do.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that's my understanding. I would defer to Pima County Attorney.
Yes. Okay, great. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously, 4-0. Thank you. Believe we have time. Item 13, Cotaro Marana Irrigation District pursuant to ARS 16-642B, certified copy of the official canvas for the November 14th election conducted by the Cotaro Marana Irrigation District. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And then we're on item 14.
Chair Gidi Haba.
I'm a little concerned, yes Supervisor Scott.
I, I don't think there's any possibility we're going to be able to address this item in the 13 minutes that we have. If we could come back to it.
Yes, I, I was just, I was looking at the time and, and took a pause. Right. Okay. So how about we skip item 14 and move to items 15 and 16? Can we move those together? That's a community and workforce development. It would provide 150 jobs for young people over, with Tucson Youth Development, SIR, and Goodwill. I'll go ahead and move 15 and 16.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 17 is the AVR test, doing businesses AVR health to provide Tucson Pima County Problem Solving Court Initiative. Extend the term contract from October 31st and amend contract language and add an amount from SAMSA fund. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Do we, can we take, do we want to take anything?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I would ask to.
Supervisor Christie.
Scan the board if they would like to address items 20, 21, 22, 23. And I would like to address 23, excuse me, I would like to address 24, but, but then add to the addressing of the board with the ones I just mentioned, along with 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31.
Okay.
And I think we better stop.
Well, I know, let me, some of those are resolutions I'll have to read. So do we have an issue with 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23? I believe you wanted to address Supervisor Christie. So this would be 18 through 22?
Through 23.
Oh, through 23. Okay. So 18 through 23, I'll go ahead and move those items.
Second.
A motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And now we're on item 24. This is the trust to provide acquisition agreement and warranty deed for 4.1 acres of privately owned property for open space purposes. I will move the item.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I'll be voting no against this, this purchase of additional open space for reasons that don't really need to be gotten, gotten into as opposed to the amount of open space we already have. But the funding source is troubling because in the background, it says that this money, which amounts to only $114,000, but nonetheless, it's still money. It is coming out of the Pago Fund, comma, Open Space Capital Projects. When do we have open space capital projects in Pago?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gidi Haba and Supervisor Christie, I'll let Mr. DeBonis go through this, but obviously, Pago does provide for other opportunities other than simply roads. This is part of those funds that deal with other issues, Mr. DeBonis, if you want to do one.
And it's listed, and it's listed as one of those funds?
Mr. DeBonis.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, yes, there are other projects funded with Pago dollars as part of the fiscal year budget for this year '24, as well as fiscal year '23. The board approved $2 million each fiscal year for open space acquisition, and the source of those dollars was Pago.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And do we have slides for this item?
No. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we show them, please? Okay. So this is the property that we're talking about?
So, Madam Chair, we can go ahead and, this is a standard slide just showing the biological corridors and critical habitat. If you'll click one more slide, this will show, the property is in the lower right. Number one is the property that's being acquired today. This is at the CAP Land Bridge, so it's a wildlife crossing over the CAP Canal. Those properties reflected with a star, number two, four, and five have already been acquired by Pima County, so we are filling in the puzzle, if you will.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
One real quick question. We did not have to use Pago funds to purchase this, did we?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, so those were the funds that were identified when the board went ahead and approved the $2 million. Those were the dollars that were identified to go ahead and allocate to this, these acquisitions, conservation land acquisitions.
And just to follow up, this doesn't impact any of the other expenditures coming out of Pago, including roads?
Madam Chair, no, it does not. So the full allocation of, of Pago is intact.
Great.
For transportation.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Thank you for the slides. And then item number 25, Pima County Licensed Road, I'm sorry, Supervisor Christie.
As a offer of addressing number 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31, I would so move to address them all in total.
Okay. I will second, but let me go ahead and read. So 27 is resolution number 202366, 28 is resolution number 202367, and 29 is resolution number 202368. And so I have a motion by Supervisor Christie for 25 through 31, and I seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously, 4-0. And now we're on item 32. This is acceptance of the health department to provide for Pima County Medical Reserve Corps, for, I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
This is a, an item that is to inject monies into the Pima County Health Department and to create a medical reserve corps state. And the purpose, according, according to the background, is the Administration for Strategic Preparedness and Response Medical Reserve Corps Program, Corps Program, announced $2 million in American Rescue Plan funding available for this creation of the Medical Reserve Corps. Arizona is using MRC Strong grant funding to expand, sustain, and improve the Medical Response Corps network with a particular focus on health emergency preparedness, response, and health equity needs. It's my belief that the health department has more than adequate funds. We don't need another bureaucracy in the Pima County Health Department. This will end up like all government programs, especially in the Pima County Health Department, to create a permanent department addressing a transitory situation. And it seems that it's the desire of the Pima County Health Department to continue a perpetual self-sustaining COVID response staff, COVID response staff within this corps, even though the pandemic is over. So I will ask that this item be voted down.
So I just want to make sure that I read that the program goals are ADHS, which Arizona Department of Health Services, will utilize these grant funds to increase the number of volunteers across the straight, state by 25%, and to expand MRC, which is Medical Reserve Corps, Corps by, units by establishing six MRC units, including three new units in tribal jurisdictions. Funding will be used to deliver workforce disaster preparedness training to at least 200 community partners statewide. And 100% of the Arizona regions will then have active MRC units working with responders and service organizations to implement training on promoting best practices in health, access to health opportunities within community context, develop statewide standard training and protocols and procedures. So I, I don't, I, I'm not suggesting that they won't be, you know, potentially preparing for another sort of pandemic, but I think that that's what we should be doing, so I don't have an issue with this. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no.
Madam Chair.
Do we have an issue with 33?
May I offer?
Sure, go ahead.
That we address 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and move items 32, oh, no, you Supervisor Christie, go ahead.
So I'm, I move that we address, that the board addresses items 33 through 39.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. So since we only have a few minutes before executive session, I'll go ahead and ask that we go into executive session.
Could we go ahead and, because I think we have time to do it, do item 6 on the addendum?
Item 6. Yep, sure. Item 6 is Custom Storage LLC to provide flex production, refresh, disaster, and recovery deployment services. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. All right, so now if we can adjourn into executive session, I'll so move, oh, I'll move it.
Second.
Have a second. A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. We'll be in re, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your attention. We are back in session and we are going to the time certain item of 11:30. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize. So for executive session, it's just proceed as discussed and exec. I don't think we even have a vote, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. So item number seven is Board of Supervisors District Three Discussion Action Regarding the Appointment of the New District Three Board of Supervisors. In this case, our clerk may be called upon to vote, and so she did some research about what her predecessors have done in this position, and so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Melissa.
Okay, Madam Chair, Board members. During past VOS appointments by the board, it appears that the clerk only voted when there was a tie vote. On May 30, 1997, with the appointment of former supervisor Ray Carroll, there was a tie vote to appoint the clerk voted, which resulted in a three to two vote. On February 26, 2002, there was a board appointment of former supervisor Richard Elias. The original motion was to appoint supervisor Elias. There was a substitute motion to appoint Alex Rodriguez. The chair requested a roll call vote on the substitute motion, which resulted in a tie vote. The clerk did not vote on the tie vote of the substitute motion. The chair then requested a roll call vote on the original motion, which resulted in a tie vote. The chair then stated that the clerk would break the tie on the original motion resulting in a three to two vote. On September 30, 2003, with the board appointment of former supervisor Ramon Valadez, the board appointed four zero, clerk did not vote. On April 7, 2020, with the board appointment of former supervisor Betty Viegas, the board voted to appoint three to one, the clerk did not vote. So upon researching what my past predecessors have done, I am going to abstain unless in the event of a tie vote of the appointment, because I believe that a majority of this board can come to an agreement to fill the vacancy for one year until the voters decide in the 2024 election. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Heinz, I apologize. You have an item that you wanted considered regarding voting. Did you want to ask that we address that one? Or how would you like to?
Well, I guess I just I'm interested in what the law is with regard to the clerk voting, not what previous clerks or previous boards did correctly or incorrectly. So could we hear from our counsel as to what the actual role of the clerk should be based on the statute, please?
Yeah, Chair Supervisor Heinz, the statute is pretty vague. When a vacancy occurs, the remaining supervisors, together with the clerk, shall fill the vacancy, and that's all the guidance the statute provides.
So it doesn't say the clerk only votes in the case of a tie?
Supervisor Heinz, it doesn't have any specific guidance.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Doesn't that also make the case that not only is it the clerk, not only can the clerk vote in the event of a tie, but she can vote anytime?
Mr. Brown.
Chair Geraldo Supervisor Christie, I think the best way to proceed is that the board can decide how it wants to do this together with the clerk in accordance with the statute.
When we say together with the clerk, that means if the clerk so decides, she or he may vote in this case, as well as vote in the event of a tie.
Correct, pursuant to whatever motions pass.
If she chooses not to vote, that's an abstention.
Correct. That's also an option Supervisor Christie.
And that's also her option.
So the real ruling of the ability of the clerk's position in this matter is she has a vote, and it's not just a vote in the event of a tie.
I think statutorily, the purpose, the intent behind having the clerk vote is to break a tie in the event that there's four people remaining on the board. Practically, if the clerk decides to abstain, then you know, it's sort of consistent with what we've done in the past. I mean, it has the same effect if there are other motions.
Well, I agree with Dr. Heinz or Supervisor Heinz. I'm not concerned about what they've done in the past. I'm more concerned about what the law states as the clerk's ability. And when the law states that the clerk will work in accordance with the board, that would mean that she also has a vote. Whether she chooses to exercise that vote is up to her, but nonetheless, she does have a vote.
Supervisor Christie, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? So if you'll permit, I'll go. I'm just going to read a statement. "I have taken great care in creating with my staff a fair process for meeting with all of the eight applicants seeking appointment to the District Three office. I've had the opportunity to meet with every applicant, all of whom received the same questions in advance, had the same meeting format, and for the same length of time. My staff and I met with every applicant over Zoom. Our clerk, Melissa Manriquez, also listened in on every meeting. I also had the opportunity to watch the public forum on Monday, December 11, facilitated by the League of Women Voters and supported by the Pima County Platform. Thank you to the League and to Pima County IT and Communications for making that possible. Throughout this process, I can undeniably attest that I have learned so much more about District Three and the issues facing our Pima County constituents in that district. As a member of this board, I am cognizant of the impact that our votes have on Pima County as a whole, and it was invaluable to hear from each and every applicant. I am very impressed with the caliber of all the applicants, and I want to thank each applicant for taking the time to meet with our D5 team, as well as with many of my colleagues, most of whom held similar meetings of their own. I know it had to be difficult to manage this interview and forum process while juggling work, family, and holidays, scheduling, and commitments. Each applicant put forward a great effort, and it didn't go unnoticed. I also appreciate our community members who reached out directly advocating for a specific applicant or asking for an applicant who would champion the issues important to their specific concerns. I read every letter, email, text, and chats with those who called. No matter who is appointed today, District Three will be in good hands with someone who is passionate about representing the D3 community, willing to put in the hard work and do their best by their constituents. Thank you to Jen, April, Matt, Kristen, Sylvia, Joe, and Edgar for your willingness to serve our community in this way." There's one disclaimer I have to say. Mr. Edgar Soto is the Vice President of Pima Community College Desert Vista Campus, where my husband works. Mr. Soto does not supervisor-evaluate my husband, and I have no conflict with this vote, but I wanted to make sure that I made this statement in case someone should decide later on to bring it up. With that said, I would like to put forward a motion in support of appointing April Ignacio for the Pima County District Three Supervisor. As a member of the Thonotum Nation, Ms. Ignacio brings a unique and valuable perspective to the board, and it has never had before, an indigenous voice. Ms. Ignacio's experience and background is unique and one that has not been represented on this board. The nation occupies much of D3, and April would be the first member of the nation to serve on the board. For Pima County, it would help establish a better working relationship with our partners, the Thonotum Nation and Basque Boyaki Communities, and bring a lived experience of living in rural Pima County. In her interview, she proved to be knowledgeable of the needs and diverse interests of District Three, and I'll move her in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion?
Chair Geraldo.
Supervisor Scott.
Like you, I interviewed all eight of the candidates, booked an hour with each one of them. Every one of them made a compelling and convincing case for why they should be granted this appointment. Four of the eight have said that they will be or could be candidates for a full term next year. District Three has not had an open seat in over 30 years. Supervisor Bronson served for 27 years, and she defeated a multi-term incumbent when she was first elected. Other than the four people just mentioned, there may well be other candidates who did not apply for the appointment. Appointing someone who plans to run for the office gives them several advantages, and I do not believe after having an open seat, not having an open seat for over 30 years, that the Board of Supervisors should confer the advantage of incumbency upon anybody who said that they would be a candidate or could be a candidate. For that reason, I will not be able to support the motion since Ms. Ignacio is one of the four people who have indicated that she would be a candidate. Even if it is not our intention, there will be people in the community who believe we want that person to be elected as the District Three Supervisor. My preference is to appoint someone who has said that they will serve out the balance of Supervisor Bronson's term but will not seek a term in their own right. I think that that would then allow the district to be represented and the people of District Three to be spoken for for the next year, and then politics can take care of itself in both the primary and general elections. So I will not be able to support the motion.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
Pass.
Supervisor Heinz?
Can we all just keep passing all day? No, just kidding. I vote yes.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Geraldo?
Yes.
Clerk Manriquez?
I abstain.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
So we have two noes, two yeses, and so it would go back to Clerk Manriquez.
Clerk Manriquez. And to clarify, this is for the appointment of April Ignacio?
To appoint April Ignacio.
No.
Okay, item fails three to. Now, we'll go. I'm going to ask that we put forward a motion in support of appointing Jennifer Allen for the Pima County District Three Supervisor. Ms. Allen's experience speaks for itself. Her background in advocacy with immigrants' rights, indigenous land rights, labor movement, voting rights, pro-neighborhood, and other efforts would be a great perspective to add to the board. In her interview, she proved to be incredibly well-prepared and knowledgeable of Pima County programs and initiatives like the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, an effort I know our former colleague Supervisor Sharon Bronson championed, Pima County's housing efforts, and early education program. Overall, her professionalism is apparent, and I feel like she's ready and qualified to represent the diverse interests of District Three, and I'll put forward Jennifer Allen in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion?
Chair Geraldo.
Supervisor Scott.
For the same reasons that I cited in opposition to Ms. Ignacio's appointment, I am also not able to support Ms. Allen's appointment. Like Ms. Ignacio, she has filed a statement of interest indicating that she will be a candidate. I do not believe this board should confer the benefits of incumbency on someone who indicates they will run for a term in their own right.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
Pass.
Supervisor Heinz?
I vote yes.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Geraldo?
Yes.
Clerk Manriquez?
Abstain.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
That's two to two, so we'll go back to Clerk Manriquez. Clerk Manriquez?
No.
So the item fails three to.
May I make a motion?
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you to Jen, April, Matt, Kristen, Sylvia, Joe, and Edgar for your willingness to serve our community in this way. There's one disclaimer, I have to say. Mr. Edgar Soto is the Vice President of Pima Community College Desert Vista Campus, where my husband works. Mr. Soto does not supervisor evaluate my husband, and I have no conflict with this vote, but I wanted to make sure that I made this statement in case someone should decide later on to bring it up. With that said, I would like to put forward a motion in support of appointing April Ignacio for the Pima County District III Supervisor. As a member of the Thonotum Nation, Ms. Ignacio brings a unique and valuable perspective to the board, and it has never had before, an indigenous voice. Ms. Ignacio's experience and background is unique, and one that has not been represented on this board. The nation occupies much of D3, and April would be the first member of the nation to serve on the board. For Pima County, it would help establish a better working relationship with our partners, the Thonotum Nation, and Basque Boyaki communities, and bring a lived experience of living in rural Pima County. In her interview, she proved to be knowledgeable of the needs and diverse interests of District III, and I'll move her in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion?
Chair Geralba.
Supervisor Scott.
Like you, I interviewed all eight of the candidates, booked an hour with each one of them. Every one of them made a compelling and convincing case for why they should be granted this appointment. Four of the eight have said that they will be, or could be, candidates for a full term next year. District III has not had an open seat in over 30 years. Supervisor Bronson served for 27 years, and she defeated a multi-term incumbent when she was first elected. Other than the four people just mentioned, there may well be other candidates who did not apply for the appointment. Appointing someone who plans to run for the office gives them several advantages. And I do not believe, after not having an open seat for over 30 years, that the Board of Supervisors should confer the advantage of incumbency upon anybody who said that they would be a candidate, or could be a candidate. For that reason, I will not be able to support the motion, since Ms. Ignacio is one of the four people who have indicated that she would be a candidate. Even if it is not our intention, there will be people in the community who believe we want that person to be elected as the District III Supervisor. My preference is to appoint someone who has said that they will serve out the balance of Supervisor Bronson's term, but will not seek a term in their own right. I think that that would then allow the district to be represented, and the people of District III to be spoken for for the next year, and then politics can take care of itself in both the primary and general elections. So I will not be able to support the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
Pass.
Supervisor Heinz?
Can we all just keep passing all day? No, just kidding. I vote yes.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chegrihalba?
Yes.
Clerk Manriquez?
I abstain.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Do we have to call on the board again?
So we have two noes.
Two noes, two yeses.
Two yeses, and so it would go back to Clerk Manriquez.
Clerk Manriquez. And to clarify, this is for the appointment of April Ignacio?
To appoint April Ignacio.
No.
Okay, item fails 3-2. Now, we'll go, I'm going to ask that we put forward a motion in support of appointing Jennifer Allen for the Pima County District III Supervisor. Ms. Allen's experience speaks for itself. Her background in advocacy with immigrants' rights, indigenous land rights, labor movement, voting rights, pro-neighborhood, and other efforts would be a great perspective to add to the board. In her interview, she proved to be incredibly well-prepared and knowledgeable of Pima County programs and initiatives like the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan, an effort I know our former colleague Supervisor Sharon Bronson championed, Pima County's housing efforts, and early education program. Overall, her professionalism is apparent, and I feel like she's ready and qualified to represent the diverse interests of District III, and I'll put forward Jennifer Allen in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion?
Chair Geralba.
Supervisor Scott.
For the same reasons that I cited in opposition to Ms. Ignacio's appointment, I am also not able to support Ms. Allen's appointment. Like Ms. Ignacio, she has filed a statement of interest indicating that she will be a candidate. I do not believe this board should confer the benefits of incumbency on someone who indicates they will run for a term in their own right.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
Pass.
Supervisor Heinz?
I vote yes.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chegrihalba?
Yes.
Clerk Manriquez?
Abstain.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
That's 2-2, so we'll go back to Clerk Manriquez. Clerk Manriquez?
No.
Okay, so the item fails 3-2.
May I make a motion?
Supervisor Heinz?
I will move that we fill the vacancy in District III with Kristen Randle.
In the form of a motion?
Oh yes, and that is in the form of a motion.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Chair Geralba.
Supervisor Scott?
I would move that we appoint Dr. Sylvia Lee to fill out the balance of Supervisor Bronson's term.
I will second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Scott, and a second by Supervisor Heinz. Discussion?
Chair Geralba.
Supervisor Scott.
Dr. Lee has already been elected by the voters of District III to represent them on the Pima Community College Governing Board, a position that she held for six years. She also has decades of leadership experience in a variety of capacities. She has also earned a great deal of recognition and respect throughout our community through her involvement in organizations such as Literacy Connects and Lastonia St. Tucson. She has also indicated that she will not seek a term in her own right in 2024. I believe that her experience with budgets, with policymaking, with personnel, would equip her well to represent the people of District III for the year remaining on Supervisor Bronson's term. And in the interim, there could be robust contests in both the Democratic primary, where we already have multiple candidates, and then in the general election after both parties have made their choices for nominees. So I think this is the best, it's the most sensible and most fair outcome, not only for the people of District III, but I believe for the board.
Thank you. Any other comments? A roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
Pass.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chegrihalba?
Yes.
Clerk Manriquez?
Abstain.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Congratulations, Dr. Lee. I want to thank you all. Many of the candidates are here. I want to thank you all for your presence here, and for your continued advocacy for Pima County, and specifically for District III. This was obviously a very difficult vote for all of us, and I think all of you could have done a good job here, but thank you. And if it's okay, we'll go ahead and take a quick recess while we let people kind of leave if they need to. Thank you so much. We are going to be back in session. Supervisor Heinz has left, so we are going on. Let me see, remind me of where we ended. Yes, we ended 14. It's Findings and Recommendations for Pretrial Justice Work Groups. This is Discussion, Direction, Action, Presentation by the Presiding Judge of Superior Court of the Findings and Recommendations of the Three Work Groups: Data Governance, Electronic Monitoring, and Release Conditions. Matrix. Judge is here, just please. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. I know you got here a long time ago, but I appreciate your patience.
No, it's important work that you're doing, so it's my pleasure. Good morning, all Madam Chair, Board Members, Ms. Lesher, Madam Clerk. Good morning and happy holidays, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you the good work we've been doing with our work groups. I want to emphasize that I'm not here asking for any approvals or any funding, so this is purely an informational presentation for you. As you mentioned, we have four work groups that we've put together and are working, and those four work groups involve, and I'm going to discuss them in this order, our data and collection work group, the electronic monitoring evaluation group, the expansion of our pretrial group to make it more robust, and the fourth is bail and bond evaluation. So starting with the data and collection, it is really what I think a central and important part of what we're doing, because by collecting accurate data, we're going to be able to identify what we're doing well, and those areas where we can improve. But it's data-driven, it's not just by guessing where there might be leaks in the boat. So I am happy to share that we have five areas of collection, we've talked about those before, I can go through them again if you wish, but of those five areas, we are ready to collect the felony information, and to have that reported to the court on a quarterly basis. So that will be starting right away. The first report is expected in the early spring. There is a challenge with collecting some of the information, and it's a twofold challenge. The challenge is with the misdemeanor information. The reason it's a challenge is because there are about twice as many misdemeanor defendants, and so it requires an expansion of our Statistics Department in pretrial, which would be three additional persons. And there's a funding request that we intend to put forward in our 2425 budget. However, late summer, the AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts mandated that all pretrial departments, as well as some probation, but we're talking about pretrial, change our case management systems to a consistent system throughout the state. Now, the reason that's important is because that's what we rely on to collect our data. So the frustrating delay is that over '24, we will be instituting that case management program, which, without the individuals in place, is going to make it difficult, if not impossible, to collect misdemeanor information. But we do intend to put the people in place, and intend to begin collection and reporting of that data in '25, if I'm keeping track of my years. Now, there is a big positive to that. While there's some disappointment in the delay, we are going to be able to collect, compare statewide data, not just a small pocket of Pima County data. This is much more valuable to us, again, so we can identify what's working, what's not working, and how we can improve our system. So that is where we are in our data collection. We do expect to be able to have information early spring on the felony issues. Our next work group is the electronic monitoring group. Now, you may recall, I explained the last time I was here in June, that electronic monitoring may sound straightforward, it's a very complicated issue. And the data on electronic monitoring is very limited as to whether it would have any positive impact on groups at all. I believe, although it may not be statistically proven, that the reason for that is that most jurisdictions that use electronic monitoring use it in a scattershot. They're not tailoring it to any particular population. And we know it doesn't work in some groups. So it's a real mixed bag as to whether it's working or not. We do believe that domestic violence felonies would be a good population to start in. We also recognize Arizona's statute that requires that certain sexual offenses, for those defendants that are on release, if there's electronic monitoring available, we are mandated to include them. So our initial population would be fairly large to start, and our estimated expense is $2.5 million to design and implement that program. The challenge we have is, with that level of an investment, and without a high level of assurance that it's going to be a positive impact, it's hard to really invest those dollars and that time into that program with a lot of question marks out there. Now, however, we've continued to beat the bushes and look at what other options we have, and we are very happy that in the summer, we were given the opportunity to join a less robust electronic monitoring program. I'm using those finger quotes, because it's not traditional, it's not with the ankle bracelet. It's an application that is placed on the cellphone of the defendant. And Pima County is one of, I believe, three counties that have begun to go down this road, and it may be the only one that actually has started using this program. And what it does is, not only does it allow some, well, what it does is it allows a chat function, it has the ability to have FaceTime check-ins, it has the ability to have push notifications. And I find this to be a very exciting program. We're using it on nonviolent felons at this time. But the reason I find it very exciting is that nationally, the pretrial community has learned that we can improve our failure-toappear rate by some very simple actions like reminders. The example that was given to me is, if you're like me, I can't remember the last time I missed a dentist appointment without giving notice to the office, and it's because they give me four or five emails reminding me of my appointment. We can do that now with court hearings. We can do that with appointments that they have with therapists and things of that nature. We anticipate that this is going to have a significant positive impact on reducing our failure-toappear rate. So that's a very good move forward, and we're continuing to evaluate it. It even has an opportunity, we haven't gone here yet, but for GPS tracking. Now, there are some administrative issues that come with that, and we haven't put forward yet, and there's also some issues as to whether the GPS tracking would be accurate under the current way it's designed, but we are fully using the chat function and the push notifications, as well as the face check-ins. And I should mention that it's all biometric verified, so face verification, so you know that who you're talking to is the defendant. Our third group is the expansion of pretrial, making it more robust. The basis behind that was that our prosecuting agency said that they would be more likely to recommend and support release to pretrial services if our pretrial department was more robust, was able to spend more time with each defendant. So we have recommended that we increase our pretrial staffing by five individuals with an estimated expense of about $600,000. Along with that, we are also recommending that we have three peer support additions added to that. The peer support is a critical aspect of pretrial. Those are individuals with lived experiences like the defendants, and we are finding that if you have someone who's been aware as a defendant, you've been through what they're going through, you can say with credibility, "Do this, be committed, it works." And we expect improvement on compliance and on getting people on the right track again with that. We anticipate asking for about half of that funding request in our 2425 budget. The half is because, like most individuals, our experience recently with recruiting- The half is because, like most individuals, our experience recently with recruiting and hiring individuals has been a challenge. We anticipate it's going to take through '24 to get those people on board and to begin training, but we're not fully utilizing all the money at that time. We expect to ask for the second half in our 2526 budget. But this will allow us to expand our pretrial department in order to spend more time. It will reduce our caseloads from 120 per officer on average to 85 per officer on average, and it'll allow us to spend more time with each defendant. Finally, we have the bail and bond review committee, and what we've done is very exciting. There is a matrix that in the past we've used, and to, I'm not going to do it justice, but I'm going to share with you as much as I can, that defendants are evaluated prior to being brought before the initial appearance, and they're given a score based upon their risk of failure to appear and their risk to reoffend. And within that score, they're put into a chart, a grid chart. In the past, that grid chart talks about whether to release or not release. This chart has changed that, flipped it on its head, and it's really focused on, should you choose to release, Judge, these are the conditions. These are the supportive services that should be put in place. And it can go from own recognizance to a severe or a very restrictive form, or anything combined in between. Now, I'll tell you why this is exciting is that we've worked with national advisors in designing this, and I've talked with them, and they've told me, this is the first instrument in the nation that looks at it this way. And they applaud our efforts, they applaud putting this together, and they are promoting it to other jurisdictions. And we are just about ready to roll it out. We're expecting first quarter of 2024. We're going to be putting that forward, we're going to be training our judges, and we're going to be using that instrument going forward. There was a mention during the public comment relating to the financial assessment tool, which is an important aspect of analysis, and frankly, it's a, the absence of a state-accepted financial analysis is an important issue to look at. You may be aware, I believe I mentioned last time, the state has put together similar work groups as we put together. We were first, I'll say, but they have state work groups, and we have members on each of the committees. The state work group has taken the financial assessment tool to heart. They are working on it, and we are working, using our input to work through that to go to hopefully move forward on a state-accepted financial assessment tool. That's my update. I'm available for questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For members?
Chair Gohalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Judge Bergen, I have great respect for you and the Superior Court and its role in our system, but I really must seriously question the robustness and seriousness of the work group's efforts in the last six months. Candidly, when I read the report, it didn't look like six months of work to me. The county administrator came up with the concept for this work group so that concerns raised by the board and the community regarding the size and composition of the jail population could be addressed along with the practices of magistrates and judges during initial appearances. Six months from now, the IGA will come up for renewal, and I'm unlikely to vote for renewal of the IGA in its current form unless and until I see more substantive progress being made by this work group. And one of the main reasons I say that is because a lot of the items that are in this memorandum dated December 15th were shared with us back in June, including all of the cost estimates. So while I'm interested in hearing anything that you may want to share with us today, I have questions that I'm going to send to the county administrator for which I would like written responses in a memorandum to the board, and those questions are going to be as follows. Number one, the report we received states that the release conditions matrix described therein has been one of the primary areas of focus over the last six months. The report also states that the work group will continue to explore the increased use of preventive detention and the implementation of a financial assessment tool for bail decisions. I would like to know what specifically that further exploration will look like between now and the date for the IGA renewal. What are details the work group will be exploring? Excuse me. Second question, the report cites the four, five areas of bail outcomes where data should be collected. The first, third, and fourth items on that list apply to people arrested for felonies. My understanding is that the, those arrested for felonies constitute approximately 90% of the jail population. Given that the report says that pretrial services can quote coordinate the reporting in the above categories for defendants with felony charges, it would be helpful to have that data when we are considering the recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission regarding the existing jail and whether a new facility is needed. Now, I know you're saying the second quarter of 2024, I think we're going to get the recommendations from the commission around that time, maybe a little sooner, but it would be nice to have that data. Because what I've been trying to find out, and Mr. Holmes knows because of some of the conversations we've been having, what I'm trying to find out is who needs to be in the jail because they are a threat to public safety, or they have been sentenced there, and who is everybody else? And we don't have that data, and it's frustrating to ask that question and not be able to get any answers to it. Third, the report repeats estimated expenses associated with programs that were first shared with the board six months ago. The report says there is no funding request being made at this time. You mentioned when some of those funding requests will be included in your oral report, but I'm wondering if we can also get a revised estimate on electronic monitoring based on the savings that would come about by people not being incarcerated in the jail. And the board got some written comments from Ms. Kramer to that effect that you might have been copied on. I also wanted to read from the minutes of the last meeting where we had you with us, which was back on June 20th. And Chair Gohalva mentioned three recommendations that the county attorney had made. Request the court report on its vetting process for magistrates appointed to conduct initial appearance hearings, including minimum and other qualifications. Request the court report on its initial appearance training process, including training materials. And three, revisit this item in January of 2024 after the supervisors have had a chance to analyze the December 2023 report recommended by county administrator Lesher. In the meeting, according to our minutes, you responded that you received and reviewed county attorney Conover's letter, and it was referred to the work group. You stated that you needed to rely on the work group to make their recommendations and take steps from there. You added that it should not take a lot of time for the work group to review the county attorney's recommendations, that you saw the value in what was requested and would take steps to evaluate it, but I don't see that addressed in the report. So I'd like those recommendations to be addressed and something reported back to the board. The chair also questioned if there were representatives from TPD and the sheriff's department as part of the work group. You replied that there are no representatives from TPD and the sheriff's department as part of the work group at this point, but they would be added as a phased-in group, and it was a next step. You added that law enforcement partners would be added in the next few meetings before the fall, and that's not addressed in the report, and they're not listed as members of the work group, so I'm assuming they haven't been added. The other question, another question I'm going to have is, we have a new presiding magistrate, and I would like to know how that presiding magistrate is going to address questions raised by this board and this community about excessive bail being imposed during initial appearances, and how will he address the concerns that led to his predecessor not being renewed in his role? In other words, I'm very interested in hearing what this new presiding magistrate is going to do differently from the gentleman who was, who was not renewed. Mr. Holmes, back on May 2nd, when he gave a report to the board as one of the updates on our initiatives to take on homelessness and housing, mentioned the idea of a consolidated warrant resolution center, which would be developed to deal with people who are failing to appear. Mr. Holmes stated that FTAs continue to pile up, and with a consolidated warrant resolution center, it would bring in judges and those in support of the prosecution process to address it. I would like administration and the working groups to take a look at this consolidated warrant resolution center. Now, I don't think I am either an unreasonable or impatient person. I recognize Judge Bergen, that change takes time, but this entire board needs information and data to make intelligent decisions about both the IGA and the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations that are coming our way, and the work group and the administration need to get that information and get that data to the board so that we can make intelligent decisions about the IGA, about the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations. There also needs to be, and this has just been clear, for me at least, since the beginning of this discussion, there needs to be more coordination and collaboration between all players in the criminal justice system with regard to these matters, and it just doesn't appear to be happening. And frankly, I don't think it's been happening for many years, perhaps even dating back, Ms. Kramer, to when you were in the county attorney's office. I just, I don't see a lot of coordination and collaboration between all the players in the criminal justice system. So I will put those in writing, I will send them to Ms. Lesher. I appreciate you listening to them now, and if there's anything that you want to say now, I'm happy to listen, Judge Bergen.
All right. Well, and Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, I will look forward to those questions, and we'll evaluate them at this time. I need to emphasize a couple of things. One thing is that Judge Reohas, when he chose not to go forward with asking for reappointment, he stepped down. It wasn't that he was refused to be reappointed, but the recommendations from that group had nothing, from the group that evaluated him, had to do with a decision he made earlier in the year and how he responded to it in committee. It did not have to do with bail and bond decisions. The recommendations from the commission focused on another issue. Once their recommendation came out, then other groups came forward and also said, and we are concerned about bail and bond. So I think those are separate issues. I also need to emphasize that judges are committed to the Constitution of the United States, the constitutional laws of the state of Arizona, and that's how we evaluate cases, and that's what we apply. We're an independent branch of government, and I highly respect this board. I feel we have a good working relationship, but the board will not be telling us how to evaluate cases and how to make our decisions. We're an independent branch, and as I said, we're committed to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona and the Constitution of the United States, and that's our, those are our guideposts. So to a large degree, if there needs to be a change in how we make decisions, that needs to be through the legislature, who sets those laws and has our constitution in place to tell the judges, this is how the law is to be applied. So I'm giving you a preview as to what some of the responses will be. I do understand the frustration with the delay to some degree. I won't even call it a delay, but to the pace that is being done. But we are doing this in an informed manner and with stakeholders from all areas. The work groups are not just court-oriented. They are prosecutors. They are defense. They are resource-driven. They're pretrial individuals. So we are getting a lot of input from a lot of resources, and what we don't want to do is to make changes and put programs in place that are ill-informed or not fully explored. So it is going to take time, and it is going to take some time to make the right changes, but making the right changes is more important than making the wrong changes for the purpose of immediacy. So that, and I have full confidence in our work groups. And the last preview of responses that I'll share with you, Supervisor, is that law enforcement has not been added, and that's because their role would be in enforcement aspects, specifically with electronic monitoring. And I've shared with you the concerns that the work groups have had as to whether it would even be an effective program in the first place, so that we haven't gotten to even the enforcement step. And we are now focusing more on this, this new electronic monitoring. Again, I'm using the finger quotes that's using with the cellphone apps and see how that can go forward. It is a very positive step forward, but with that preview, I will wait for the questions, and we'll evaluate them and respond.
Thank you, Judge Bergen. Thank you, Chair Gohalva.
Any other questions? I guess our frustration is that we have the people come to this location right here and speak to us about what's happening in the jail, the overcrowding in the jail, to build or not to build a new jail, and so much of what's happening there, we have absolutely no control over. All we do is kind of are asked for increases in funding, informed on, you know, when budgets are over and in the red, and we have to deal with all of the consequences. And so there really isn't a mechanism by which people can go directly to the courts and say, hey, why are you, you know, why are you recommending bail when the prosecutors aren't recommending bail? Why are, I mean, there's no way, there's no way, other than these conversations that we have, for us to be able to get some answers. And I think I share Supervisor Scott's frustration in not getting like timely answers in the same, essentially same report, except for a couple tweaks. I just, I don't know how to reconcile that. And I understand that you're a different branch. I understand that you don't take direction from us, but we on this board have to deal with the consequences of what happens and doesn't happen in court, what's happening and not happening in the jail. And so I guess that's, you know, we just look forward to being able to have a more collegial relationship and trying to better understand what the limitations are as far as, or the interest in moving forward or not moving forward. We approve, you know, the IGA with city. So if we decide not to do that, what happens? I mean, we really are very limited in the scope of what we can and can't do, but we're the location and the faces that people come to, to, you know, express their sadness, frustration, anger, and we don't really have a role, it seems, in helping to sort of frame this in any different way.
Madam Chair, if I may, I am grateful and congratulate this board on how available you are for our public, and I do appreciate how you receive concerns and complaints in areas where, by our constitutional design, you don't have authority, and your desire and willingness to help, and I appreciate that, and I congratulate you on that. But I will also go back and say, you know, a lot of the concerns isn't start and end with the court. We need to look at charging decisions. We need to look at arresting decisions. We need to look at why there are high crime areas. We need to look at a host of socioeconomic issues, that this is a very thick onion that when you start peeling it, it is such a complicated issue that there is not one answer that will fix the issues that are before this board. But again, I thank you, and I'm grateful for all the hard work you do.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for being here.
Right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. So now we're, I believe we're done with the agenda. Now we're on the addendum, right? We're, item number two, Board of Supervisors, delay in issuance of audited annual comprehensive financial report. So this is Discussion, Direction, Action, and Delay in Issuance of Audited Annual Comprehensive Financial Report of the School Reserve Fund of the Pima County School Superintendent's Office. Request presentation by Pima County Superintendent of Schools Dustin Williams to include a listing of the schools, districts, the delay impacts, the consequences to them of this delay, and how Mr. Williams plans to remedy those negative consequences, and whether or not this has happened before. If so, how was it mitigated? I brought this item forward because I was concerned at the impact in every single one of our districts on what this delay is. I was informed by Superintendent Williams, the day we put this out, he sent a memo. The day we, we put this out, he sent a memo and then said, I've responded to your memo, and I do not plan on attending in public, which is unfortunate because, you know, this isn't the responsibility of our administrator to respond to whatever questions are, are generated by this. And so if we have questions we wanted to ask, we can do so, you know, here in this meeting and request a response. But there was a response there, and there was also a response from the former CFO who read Mr. Williams' response and wanted to address some of those concerns. So I had a list of questions to ask, but I'm not going to ask our county administrator those questions. Supervisor Christie?
Madam Chair, I'm just confused because procedurally, this seems inappropriate, that an elected official, as Mr. Williams is, who's in charge of his own department, goes directly to the chair, and the chair goes directly to him and not to the county administrator, like the sheriff does. If the sheriff's having a problem, the sheriff hasn't gone to you. He, he hasn't gone to any board member. He's gone to the county administrator. Shouldn't the county administrator provide a report to the Board of Supervisors analyzing the situation, like a staff report? And isn't there a policy regarding this type of situation? And why is this being treated differently as opposed to the way we treat it with the sheriff? And bottom line is, what action can this board take in this matter?
Yeah, and just to be very clear, out of courtesy, once I submitted this as an item for this board meeting, our, my chief of staff sent over the memo, so we had that information, Mr. Williams. So then he responded and also sent it to the clerk. So every, all of our communication is, like, the results of that communication is attached. And I do believe Mr. Williams contacted and spoke with our county administrator, which obviously she can speak to, but I just didn't feel, it's kind of like when we've asked of any other elected officials and questions about individual departments, it's really not our administrator's responsibility to answer to those questions. But the list of the school districts impacted by the delay are listed here, and they're, all of them in our, all of them in different districts.
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Could I ask, we, the board did get a memo from Ms. Lesher on this matter.
Yes.
And just for public information and the information of the representatives from the media here, Ms. Lesher, could you recap what, what you addressed to the board in that memorandum?
Chair Gahalva and Supervisor Scott, excuse me. The bottom line is that, for a variety of reasons, it appears that the superintendent of schools has not been able to complete the closeout of the, of the financial proceedings of the year and all of the finances. He provides not only work for the office, but for the majority, if you will, of the school districts. This came to our attention when we received notice from the Auditor General that there would be a finding in the county's audit next year indicating that we had not had the closeout of the superintendent's work. That's when I notified the board that we, we have been told there will be a finding. I know, I will say that the deputy treasurer, deputy treasurer, excuse me, is here today. I know that the treasurer has been working with the superintendent to close out the financials, to get the financial reportings up to date. And in my most recent conversation with the superintendent, he indicated his belief that they would be finished, he felt optimistically, I believe, by the middle of January. And we will keep the board updated on the status of the financial reports.
So, so if the county is going to have a finding, wouldn't every district impacted also have a finding?
Chair Gahalva, that is my understanding.
And, and I think that the biggest issue that this causes, my understanding, is all of the grant funds. And so ESER funds, like, if some of these districts don't know how much is left in their budget, and they can't reconcile it, that means either money is being left on the table or some of these districts will overspend and then have to come out of their general fund. I think that, I'm, I'm frustrated that Superintendent Williams chose not to come to sort of explain this.
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
To that, to that frustration, if we send Ms. Lesher questions, can you get responses to the board?
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Scott, I will answer to the best of my ability.
Because if you look at Mr. Williams', Superintendent Williams' memo, in the first sentence, he says fiscal year cash reconciliations with the treasurer's office were not completed on an ongoing basis throughout this fiscal year. I'd really like a definition of what on an ongoing basis means. Ideally, by when should cash reconciliations be done? And in the last sentence of that first paragraph, he says, additionally, there was turnover of the office's chief financial officer position as of September 6, 2023. Who would have responsibility of overseeing cash reconciliations in the absence of the chief financial officer? To that point, the former chief financial officer, as Chair Gahalva indicated, wrote to us, that her letter is attached to the item. Whereas Superintendent Williams says, a review has determined this process was only partially completed through September 2022. She says in her letter, all general ledger reconciliations were completed through May 2023. So we've got this gap of eight months between what the superintendent says to the board and what his former CFO says in her letter to the board. I'd, I'd sure like that to be explained. Also, what are the impacts of the audit findings? I, I would really like some input from the, from the affected school districts. Would like some, some further input in terms of the audit finding that the county is, is going to be facing. And then with regard to the last sentence of Chair Gahalva's item, that wasn't even addressed in, in the memorandum. I believe the direct question was, has this, has this happened before? And, and, and how was it addressed? I'm paraphrasing, but that, that wasn't even addressed. But I, I just think the discrepancies between what we have in the memorandum from the superintendent and what his former CFO wrote are, are concerns. And I would, I would definitely appreciate it if Superintendent Williams, who I think has always been very forthcoming with regard to communications to the board, to address.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. And I believe our last item, item three, is the appointment of the Pima County Representative and alternate to the Arizona Border Counties Coalition. What I would like to ask is if this board will be willing to postpone this item until Dr. Lee can, now Supervisor Lee, can join us on our next meeting on January 9th?
If that's a form of a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, but wait, I do, there's a little more. And then, and then yes, you can second if you want to. But there are a couple other committees that the chair has the discretion of appointing, and I really want to make that a collective decision of this body. And so the list of those would be not only just the Pima Counties Coalition, Border Counties Coalition, the County Supervisors Association, Metropolitan Education Commission, Pima Association of Governments, Pima County Board of Health, Regional Transportation Authority, Sun Corridor, Inc., and Visit Tucson. All of these are committees that are said to say, you know, it's under the chair's discretion. And then whether it comes back to, it, it doesn't come back to us for a vote. And so this item says, you know, the, the chair will, will come up with a list and come to the board for approval. That's fine. But I do think that it's important for us as a board to be able to vote on who's going to represent us on these different committees. So do you still second that? Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to say, Chair Gahalva, if we may, we could bring forward to the board in January a possible addition to the board's rules and regulations, noting that the chair will bring nominations to the board for ratification for these various boards.
Yeah, I think in, in my position as chair, I didn't change any of the appointments. But I think that, you know, we have a new board member joining us, and I feel it's just something that we should all be able to vote on. All right?
Agreed.
Just to, Chair Gahalva, just to clarify, we're all members of the County Supervisors Association, but you're referring to the Legislative Policy Committee?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so you'll bring that forward. So we'll, we'll withdraw this item and continue it until the 9th. But it's not this exact item, there'll be changes to it. That's why I said, I think that we could withdraw the item. All right? And then we'll get a new one with some updated info. Okay, other than that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.